Okay, let's call this meeting over. If you will all please join me by standing and reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Please be seated. All right, we'll start out with the roll call. Greg Smith.
President.
Lori Quinn. Lori's gonna be late tonight. Mike Schneider.
President.
Adrian Saunders.
President.
Robin Simpson.
President.
Jason Osborne.
President.
We have a quorum and shall proceed. First thing on agenda, item four will be review and approval of the minutes of the August 7th, 2025 meeting of the Board of Aldermen found tab four.
I was absent, so I can't offer anything.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 7th meeting.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes from the August 7th Board of Alderman meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the meeting minutes of the August 7th, 2025 Board of Alderman meeting. All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay and raise your hand. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Next thing on the agenda will be the mayor's report. I would love to tell you it's gonna be short and brief, but it will not. Hi Lori. Okay, today, a signed agreement with Klinger and Associates was completed for engineering services related to the emerging contaminants and was forwarded to the Missouri Department of Natural Resources for review and approval. Second, work and preparations and bid specifications related to the water treatment plant upgrade are continuing and people services is working in conjunction with Black and Beach Engineering Company and the Missouri Department of Natural Revenue. A review of the Code of Ordinances noted that the position of collectors utilizing many areas of the code and we need to determine what actions should be taken to address this. That's gonna be passed off to admin committee for review. Additionally, we also noted that the Forest Department is mentioned in several sections of the code, which of course are now obsolete. I'm also going to be directing that to the admin committee for review and appropriate actions. Very soon, I will be bringing forth a bill for review to address amending the code, which requires business license for almost everyone doing business in the city of Monroe City. It was brought to my attention recently that it's, there's not very many loopholes in it at all. Many years ago, I think back in 2000, 2003, there was amendment to the code made that allowed certain entities not to have to have a business license. And one of the, it was very lengthy, and I didn't bring it with me to read. But examples would be individuals under the 18 that might be mowing or trimming or raking leaves, lemonade stands, farmer's market in St. Jude, several others. And so let me bring that back. We'll be doing some editing to it and bring it back as a bill for you all to review. And that'll be in the future, near future. Any questions on that?
No, not on that. I have a question.
Yes.
We have proposed an admin meeting for this coming Monday.
Yes.
Are those actions, I know something you would like us to discuss this coming Monday?
Yes.
Can you send them to me?
Yes, and I tell you what I'll do, I'll send you the sections from code. And then you guys can take a look at those. Probably get those printed up ahead of time and have those available to you for your meeting.
We'd need to get the agenda posted Friday then.
How many copies will you need?
Four.
Four.
There's four of us. Adrian, Lori, me and Mike, yeah. Sorry, I didn't mean that.
Okay. Folks, there'll be a public hearing to set the tax rate for 2026. It'll be on August 28th at 7:00 PM. There'll be a public hearing. And then that'll be immediately followed by a special board meeting to set the tax rate. I would've loved to have done it tonight, but we failed to get the public notification out for the seven day period as required by statute. Okay, I have an item that I need the board to advise on, and that is Gary Dowell came in today and requested the board's permission for his grandson, who I assume is a minor, to operate a soft pretzel stand at St. Jude's Park on Labor Day, September 1st, 2025. And the question is, you may, the board, you may grant them permission to do so. If you choose not to, we can ask them to pay for a business license and they can have their pretzel stand. So the question is, what do you say?
Is there something else going on in the park that day?
Not that I'm aware of. If they have, they haven't reserved St. Jude's or made us aware of it.
We should do that one day.
Yeah. He wants, wants to be over on the corner.
So the mayor asked me, Alderman of Florida is more honest than me, but I told the mayor that my experience with the hands of board is about minors to do things like this without a business license. But since the meeting was tonight, we asked the board. I don't know if you've heard of this coming up before.
Do we know for sure he is a minor?
He's in third grade.
He's not gonna be by himself?
What?
He's not gonna be by himself?
No, no. Yeah, it certainly.
I've heard about the pretzel stand for a while.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to allow that youngster to operate the pretzel.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the soft pretzel stand on Labor Day in St. Jude's Park. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion second on the floor to approve the soft pretzel stand at St. Jude's Park on Labor Day, September 1st. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay and raise your hand. The ayes have it, the motion carries. I'll make sure that he gets contacted. Okay. Lastly, this is a little unusual. Brian Miller stopped in today and asked this question. He said, "Would the board allow me to bid on the properties that no one bid on but was put out for bids that haven't established reserves?" And I thought about it for a while. And my conclusion was, he could have bid on them and gave the minimum, put in the minimum, and got them or not with a down payment. But for the properties that no one bid on, since we've already put it out in the public and we've already established that we wanted bids for it, we established a reserve or minimum bid and no one bid on it, why couldn't he come in and buy it for what was already published as the minimum reserve? Something y'all think about?
There's only one, right?
Uh, I don't know that answer yet.
It appears there's only one.
I don't know that. We can get to it, I guess, but could you, what do you think? If there's nothing?
I would refer to John, I guess.
John?
It's up to you all.
It's not legal to do that.
Yeah.
We've already posted, we've already put it out for bid. We established the minimum value for it, no one bid on it. Someone comes up later and says, "Hey, I'll take it off your hands."
Yeah. Yeah, I see. We kinda gave everyone the equal shot. It wasn't like we let someone come first in line.
Well, I agree.
We had the equal shot. Now it's like whoever shows up first, if they wanna make the minimum bid on it, they already decided to sell it. That's how, just about how I see it.
Well, I will be very, very upfront with you. I would love them both.
How many properties?
One.
Just one? Okay. We'll get to that, we'll get to that. Is there? Okay, we'll get to that shortly. Can we, can we answer the question before we get to that?
Yes.
I would, I just need the board to say yes or no.
John, seriously?
Yeah. It's up to you all.
Do we wanna make a motion that will accept this? Uh, first come, first served on the remaining properties. Can we put a timeline on that? What do you think?
Maybe think.
Ninety days? I'm, you ask, I just threw out a number.
Ninety days, that's how it's being.
You wanna make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have motion on the floor to allow individuals to come forth and make a bid on unsold properties that were recently listed. Of course, the selling price will be no less than the reserve that was already published. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have motion second on the floor to allow, I'm not sure I quite how to say this, but to allow someone to come forth and give a bid on the unsold properties based upon the recent bid that was publicized and that their selling price would be no less than the stated reserve as shown on this bid sheet. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. We're gonna get used to this eventually. I'll stop just for a second. We were requested to start raising our hands in whichever manner we voted, so that those who watched the recording on the internet but are unable to hear the individual ayes and nays will know who voted and how they voted. So that's why we're doing that. So having said that, all opposed, say nay and raise their hand. The ayes have it, the motion carries. You got that, Lizzie? All right, we'll make that happen then. And that concludes the mayor's report. Next thing we have on the agenda, the city clerk under tab six. Lizzie, it's all yours.
I'm not really sure what to go over, to be honest. Those were the accounts and then the, what about? I didn't, I didn't know a lot about prep, pep talk before.
Okay, well, you have in your tab the current bank statement and account balances. As you see, we're doing pretty good. We're actually ahead of where we thought we would be based on the budget that was passed. I'm pleased to see that. I can report that regarding the financials, the general ledger and bank rec is up to date through June. That information has been provided to Williams Keepers, who is the accounting firm in Kansas City, and will continue to make progress. Now, we won't have everything done for 2025, obviously, until about mid-October when everything has come through and can be accounted for. But we are working on the budget and will be getting more involved in that much more deeply next month. I've already begun to work with individual department managers on their budget recommendations, their requests for capital expenditures, et cetera, et cetera. So that kinda wraps up, I think, what you might have.
I think so.
Okay. All right. Okay, here, here's where we're at, Lori. Williams Keepers, for those of you out here in the public who are not aware, the last audit was done in 2019. There was no audit in 2020, no audit in 2021, and no audit in 2022. For all intensive purposes, appropriate methodologies for maintaining the general ledger and bank reconciliation ceased on or about February or March of 2022. When the current administration took office, we immediately began to try to reconstruct what had happened during that period of time. We have about 23 boxes of receipts downstairs. The ability to put all the pieces back together are daunting. So in recognition of that, we have asked Williams Keepers to give us their best recommendation on how we might overcome that obstacle. This is not official. Only the board can make this determination. But they are reviewing whether or not we can use the estimated fund beginning balances from 2023, beginning of that 2023 budget year, and to use those expected ending balances for 2023 as the beginning balances for each of the individual funds, including enterprise funds. In other words, in layman's terms, draw a line in the sand and start over, utilizing all of the information from the beginning of April 2024 through fiscal 2025, and have that audited. And compare that to cash on hand and see where we're at. I wish I had a better answer for you. Our goal has been and continues to be to get the financials cleaned up and a budget to take place. There are many reasons for that, of course. First and foremost is to be able to assure the citizens, the voters, and all interested parties that our financials are in good shape and things are going according to plan. Additionally, that, one important function is auto requirements to make the city able to apply for certain grants which require audits. And so that's where we're at. Did I answer your question? So next thing we have will be the city attorney's report.
Been working with the mayor a lot on some things that we come into the council in the next few months. But other than that, I don't have a report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Okay, next thing we have on the agenda is item number eight, which authorizes guest speakers. Darren Kendrick will be addressing the board. Darren, wanna come up? Oh, oh, I know, you're gonna use everything that you have at your disposal. You should be a politician.
Education, local development. So this is in relation to the parks too. So we live right on the corner of North Park, so we have a great house over here, which is Old Water, or Tilly's, or Autumn Park, whichever one you want to call it. And so we know that you guys have the discretion to accept or not accept bids for the park. We did, kind of as a neighborhood action, looking bidding on the park. And I sought some legal advice. Obviously, we would've just left it as a, as a park, because you guys contest to the quality of the football field there. But we've also got a lot of, Karen Kendrick, and she got her grandkids on the corner, and then Watson's and their kids, and then there's a whole bunch of other kids all around that park. But when I asked her about that, he told me that the liability of you leaving that as a park as an individual would be impossible. Basically, there's some kid down there that should just look like that. So we did bid on it. But we would like to ask you to potentially leave that park as a park for the neighborhood. I think of all the parks, it was kind of the only one that was really surrounded, kind of a small, more size by residential and, as this age, so that's why we're trying to ask you to leave the park as a, as a park.
That's 300 Park Place.
Yeah.
Yes, 300, 300 Park Place, Tilly's Park, Ocelader Park, is what it's commonly referred to. It's a 61 by 317 area. It's, I think that's called a irregular, irregular type plot. I could be wrong about that. And that's what he's talking about.
Thank you.
Well, I think what the board can do is, go ahead, Adrian. Okay, let's move along to new business. First thing on new business, item A, a city property bid tabulations. Those tabulations can be found under tab 10. Nine. Thank you. And at this time, we will review them in their entirety. What will be required for each of these properties is for the board to choose to or choose not to award the sale of each property. Very first one we have is 512 West Cleveland. We had, that property had a minimum bid of $4,500. We received a bid from Tom Bach in the amount of $7,265. He did write a check for the down payment. He has the highest bid. The next bid was from Lynnbrook Holdings, which bid $5,000. So Tom Bach would be declared the winning bid for the property of 512 West Cleveland Street.
So, I'm not trying to interrupt.
Please do.
My thinking would be on, so for each property, I'll prepare an ordinance. It'll have to be posted for the next meeting.
Okay.
So if somebody wants to make a motion for me to prepare an ordinance selling to whoever or what price,
Okay.
then I will prepare that, and then at our next meeting, the council will vote to approve that, which will allow the mayor to sign the meeting.
Okay, so that's how we.
I would say just to make sure, to be fair, we can do it one at a time as the mayor goes down the list.
I'll make a motion for the attorney to prepare an ordinance, relaying being the property of 512 West Cleveland to Tom Bach for a sale price of $7,265.
We have motion on the floor to award the bid to Tom Bach for the property of 512 West Cleveland Street. His purchase price amount will be $7,265. Do we have a second?
I'll second, ma'am.
We have a motion second on the floor to award the bid for 512 West Cleveland to Tom Bach in the amount of $7,265 and shall direct the city attorney to prepare the appropriate paperwork and documentation in ordinance form. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next thing we had was 209 First Street. We received no bids. The next property is one.
What were we done there? I'm sorry.
We're fine, that's fine.
I was gonna say, which one was the one that they were talking about buying that was, didn't have a bid?
That one, that's, that's it.
Because I was wondering, would we want to, like, accept that? I guess he hasn't given us a bid yet, he's asking if he could. That'd be my thought, is he hasn't.
He hasn't officially, okay, good.
Yeah, so part, sorry for the question.
What, this one is gonna require, the next one's gonna require a little bit of discussion, I think. 129 First Street. We received a bid, but the bid specification clearly requires each bidder to provide a check in the amount of 10% of the bid. That did not occur. So do you want to do something different?
I mean legally, my thought would be put it in the same category as the others.
Okay.
Can we reach out to the bidder and ask him if he's still as interested? Or do we feel like?
We, we could, I mean, I guess it depends on how. Do you, do you not wanna conform to what the bid specification package required? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so his bid's invalid.
Right.
Okay, so the bid that we received on 129 First Street is invalid because no down payment was tendered.
Can, so, you will, can we reach out to him?
With that being the case though, since we said 90 days on anything that didn't receive a bid, then technically, he could come back.
Yeah.
Bid and put a down payment.
Absolutely. I don't know that we should reach out to him and say anything.
Why aren't you gonna tell him it's rejected?
Are we gonna be required to call each one of these people up and tell them that their bid was rejected?
No, I just think.
Well, we need to give some other people their money back.
Yeah.
Oh, no, basically, we'll get their money back. That's how they'll know, I guess, but yeah, we'll have to call and give them their money back.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right, moving right along, 641 Second Street. Lisa Johnson bid $11,700 and she paid the 10% down payment. Damon Buick bid 25, I'm sorry, bid $2,666, $2,666. $2,660, and yes, he made the down payment. But the winning bid was Lisa Johnson in the amount of $11,700. So I would entertain a motion to award that bid to Lisa Johnson and to have the city attorney draw up the appropriate paperwork. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the floor to award the bid for 641 Second Street to Lisa Johnson. Purchase price amount $11,700. Do we have a second? Second. We have a motion second on the floor to award the bid from 641 Second Street to Lisa Johnson in the amount of $11,700. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries. John, you'll get to do some paperwork. All right. 300 Park Place in Chestnut, also known as Tilly's Park. We received two bids. The high bid was from Justin Turner in the amount of $5,400. He did issue a down payment. The number two bid was from Lynn Brooks Holding in the amount of $4,000. So the high bid was $5,400 by Justin Turner.
Um, this is the, can I see?
Absolutely.
So I would be in favor of removing this property from the list because I think it is, it is a park that is utilized and it is an oddly shaped. I don't know if you want it, what you would really, I fear the, what the new owners could do.
There's streets all around it, so if you put a house there or something.
And I don't know, you can't.
You can't, I don't think it's big enough.
Whatever my go there would be advantageous to the neighbors. I think the neighbors are not.
Well, it's all residential, I would think. So, but yet it's too small to build on, so.
I think it would be maybe a park that we shouldn't.
What do we do since we've got bidders?
Well, you can reject any bid, so we just give them their money back and stay as a park. Give them their 10% back.
I mean, there's, isn't there like some park, there's some stuff?
There's like a couple little exercise things, I don't think, but nothing big, but.
There's not much equipment, but like Mike said, there's a couple little exercises and deals. It's mostly that open wedge park. It's kind of across the street from North Park, but not in.
Catty corn.
Catty corn.
Whatever that means.
I mean, I'm okay with it, I'm, I'm a I'm a little bit against, like, selling against city parks, but that was.
We'll have that discussion. Okay, so what we would need then would be a motion from an alderman to remove 300 Park Place from the city property sale. We have motion on the floor, remove 300 Park Place in Chestnut, otherwise known as Tilly's Park and Ocelader Park from the city, city property for sale. Do we have a second?
Second.
Third. Okay, we, we, we have a motion and a second on the floor to remove 300 Park Place in Chestnut from the city property for sale. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed, all opposed, say nay and raise your hand. The ayes have it, the motion carries. 300 Park Place is removed from the city property sale list. Moving right along, the next one is 419 West Dover. And West Cleveland, otherwise known as Dolphah Thompson Park. Uh, we received a single bid from Randy Boer in the amount of $2,500, which meets the minimum bid requirement. He did post the 10% down payment. I would entertain a motion to sell 419 West Dover, West Cleveland to Mr. Boer.
That's a little train, a little chase at the end of the deal.
Right by Oak Street.
Yeah.
I don't know, does that like, does he have like the adjoining house or anything?
Yes.
Yes.
So that makes sense.
Just give him up a hurrah.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid for the four amount.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to sell the property 419 West Dover, West Cleveland to Mr. Randy Boer in the amount of $2,500. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, the property is sold. Next on the list is 224 Catherine Street, sometimes otherwise referred to as Founder's Park. Uh, the Monroe City Methodist Church, uh, has bid on that property. Uh, I will seldom do this, but I'm advocate for the church. I think they can make very, very good use of that property. They have bid $5,167.33. They did issue a check for the down, greater than the down payment. Uh, the minimum bid required was $3,000, so they met all the requirements. I would entertain a motion to sell 224 Catherine Street to the Monroe City United Methodist Church.
What'll happen to the library thing sort of?
Go remove them or my library can go get them, figure a lot out later. I don't know if they want to use. The library put them there.
That wouldn't be that hard to move those.
No, yeah, you know, uh.
Is the joint spread?
It's right, it makes perfect sense.
I'll make a motion to sell 224 Catherine to Windsor City United Methodist Church.
Okay, we have motion on the floor to, and a second, did you second it? Motion, a second on the floor to sell 224 Catherine Street Founder's Park to Monroe City United Methodist Church in the amount of $5,167.33. All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay and raise your hand. The ayes have it, the motion carries, parks, excuse me, 224 Catherine Street is sold to Monroe City United Methodist Church. Don't prepare the paperwork, uh, documentation. That takes care of that agenda item. I hope all involved are pleased with the outcome. Next thing we have will be, uh, committee reports. First thing on the agenda is planning and zoning. Nothing. Second on the agenda, and oh, there is something from someone on Parks and Recreation.
Uh, yeah, we have a few things on Parks and Recreation. Uh, let's see, the, uh. Uh, the first thing, uh, was, uh, the North Park construction is moving along, so encourage anybody that like to drive by. I think, uh, they'll have the, their part done, well, the main construction part of it done tomorrow, right? Uh, the city is, uh, putting in rock and then, uh, they'll come back at a later time to do the, the soft, uh, works up. But anyway, that, that main, uh, equipment, uh, installation is moving pretty long, raising that stuff.
Uh, I talked to the foreman, the slide, they had to order it. I guess they were short a slide when this was set and they took the slide and grabbed the order back, so. Sorry, I had to come back with the slide, top, move on the slide and even shorter, they sent the wrong line for the gate, so.
Okay, so a couple of little things there. Um, the, uh, park board, uh, was reviewing, uh, budget proposals for next year, kind of working on things for that. Things they're talking about, um, and they're going out to get bids and stuff, but like, have some prices are. The, um, basketball court at South Park.
Yes.
Either repairing or replacing that.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, the, uh, Saint, the roof of the Saint Jude's Cathedral and then some of the Saint Jude's, uh, church, uh, renovation. Uh, they also, um, wanted to, uh, uh, approve the, uh, the gravel out at, uh, South Lake. Uh, we talked earlier about, uh, building the, uh, having the parks, uh, cover the gravel for the South Lake area. Um, we've got a bid, uh, for, uh, I don't remember the numbers, do you have?
Yeah. Per ton, it was 1948 ton, $485 for, usually have 10 miles of oil, 25 ton. For the 450 ton, it's $8,730.
Eight what?
$8,730.
And that's basically two miles worth of, of ground gravel.
Well, I'm certainly in favor of it.
He said they run out there for the, the cross country.
Yeah, cross country runs out there, um, yeah.
In the dirt.
I'm sure everybody's driven around.
Yeah, they have early in the morning.
And they spread it at that rate too, right?
No.
You don't have to spread it.
Yeah, that's just hauling it, um.
So they kind of. Yeah. Ain't like a truck and trucks like each of these.
Yeah, they've got one of the big, the full-size semi-gravel traders just when they're.
Okay.
So they, they would, they would double, basically where it'd be asked them to, yeah, you would have to.
How, how fast would you like to proceed with this?
Uh, well, I mean, I think that depends on the schedule for when, uh, Rodney and them, uh, maybe.
Okay, what else you got?
Other thing we had was, uh, new swing chain for the, uh, swings, uh, for the park. Rodney's got some measurements and stuff for us.
You got bids for it?
Uh, well, I just had that sheet that come off the computer and it had different ones and whatever.
We, we found some stuff on, for, uh, the website. You get like a whole, uh, barrel of 250 feet of chain for about, let's see what was it?
We needed 260 feet and all that.
Uh. For like $441.
Okay.
Uh, one thing that we wanted to do, one thing we wondered about was, do we need to ask Burma? Chain has got the ESTM rating, it's got the, you know, under rating, but we weren't sure whether we.
That should be sufficient.
Uh, okay, that, that's just one thing that they were, uh, they didn't want to buy chain.
We, we, we could double check, but I'm, I'm certain it's not gonna be an issue.
Uh, basically then, uh, what they were, uh, when there was a, you get a pay of 250 feet for $441.
Alright. So, let's do this, um. You, you can, your budget can handle this, uh, both of them. Um. Would you want to make a motion to approve the expenditure, uh, of $8,730 plus or minus for gravel?
I will make a motion.
Okay, we have a second. We have a most second on the floor to approve the expenditure for gravel to, uh, gravel the South Lake. It'll be, uh, the approval's gonna be for $8,730. Uh, plus or minus, cause it's not gonna be exact. Let's go ahead and make it for $10,000. Uh, we'll, we'll request $10,000, uh, as a potential high number, uh, for the gravel for South Lake. We have a second?
Second.
Very good.
We have a most and a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries, that's approved. Go ahead and take the steps necessary to get that rock and roll, Rodney. Uh, next thing is we need to approve the expenditure for the chains. Um, with shipping and freight and stuff, we probably go ahead and bump up to $500 for the chains. I need a motion on the floor to approve $500 expenditure for chains for, uh, the swings at the park.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the floor to approve $500, up to $500 for expenditure for chains, to replace the chains on the swings, uh, in the park. We have a second?
Second.
We have a most second on the floor, all in favor, say aye, raise your hand. All opposed, say nay, raise your hand. Ayes have it, motion carries. Uh, get them ordered. Get them ordered. Okay, you work with her, get them ordered. How about that? Alright, anything else?
I think that's it.
I'm gonna hit you all up for more money for fish this fall, so just be prepared.
Okay.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if it's after the, uh, but, you know, but I think you probably won't have the forehead.
I'm gonna probably talk to you guys about putting in two, one in the fall and one in the spring. That's what the conservation department recommended, yeah. Alright. Well, uh, maybe more will, who knows? Uh, nothing from the economic, uh, development tax board. They've got a meeting coming up that I was invited to, so.
Do, or they, I need to take those down back to that meeting, right? For them to.
Okay, okay, it's fine, yeah. No, it's no biggie, we'll get it. We'll get it. Uh, administration committee?
We will, I guess as of tonight, have a meeting Monday over with Lizzie and you may have on agenda. Be sure to get me up. Don't forget. Don't worry.
Good.
Um, would administration time be a good time to talk briefly about the Burma conference?
Sure. Go.
Uh, well, I was just saying, I did go to that as a city representative. Uh, I thought it was pretty, uh, good to, uh, be able to, uh, meet with, uh, meet with a lot of the other city people that were down there. She's, they were all sharing the same issues that we were sharing. Uh, and then, you know, kind of, you know, getting contacted by the people and their things are doing. Um, uh, of course I brought the plaque back, I don't know if it got presented, yeah, everyone need to get new shade. Uh, the, uh, but we did get a, an award for being the city with the most improvement in our Burma score for last year.
That's good, that's good.
You know, a statement to a lot of the work that had been done by the city employees and this, uh, scale we've done by. Um, I know, you know, we kind of low as we had a little bit more room maybe than some of the other ones, but, uh, we were number one out of, they got like 110 different, you know, deals, so we were.
That's a good thing, we should.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll do a piece of dinner for everybody.
The same point, they did it, we didn't do it.
Yeah, I agree. It's great idea.
We'll, we'll talk.
So anyway, I think that was certainly, uh, a nice thing. Um, we still have room for improvement. There were, there were several entities that scored 100 on their, you know, so, so that's, uh, they get a little award for that too, so there's, there it is right at the top.
I'll tell you what, I, we, we won't let Purpy get way better.
Better, yeah. But, uh, anyway, uh, trying to think, oh, a couple of different things that, uh, uh, that they had, they offered some Missouri one call trading, uh, and they talked about Missouri one call, uh, Missouri one call was ridiculous. And they talked about they would come and give you trade on some of that.
Who do we contact?
Um. I don't have a record down here, but I.
You have. I think what I would do is, uh, right now, we're doing one call work. Uh, typically that is the gas department that does that, is that right Rodney?
Yeah, they do a lot of.
Well, okay, so that'd be good training for those guys.
Yeah, they, they basically offered like free training. They would, they would, uh, train us, uh, in that, so I thought that.
If it's free, we'll take advantage of it.
Certainly, uh, we'll be able to, uh, pass up. They also mentioned that new rules going forward, and I think we probably already know about it, but just to remind you. Uh, all new construction that goes in has to be locatable. They talk about it has to have like those, I guess.
Wire. Wire.
Uh, so, uh, that, that's one thing that, uh, they, they mentioned.
Cool.
Uh, and then one other thing that I heard from a different city, uh, I think it was, uh, Harrisonville maybe, but they were at by Kansas City, I was looking into a little bit more. But, uh, they have, they have the option for prepaid utilities, uh, for some of their stuff. I know it's an issue, cause a lot of places have the same issues we do, have in the management utility bills. But one thing that, uh, that they have is prepaid utilities where, I mean, as, it's like prepaid cell phone or whatever. It's like you put in a hundred dollars or whatever and you get a text notification that, you know, when you're, you know, when you're down to your last 20 dollars or whatever. And if you run out of money, it shuts, you shut off or you just, you know, add more money to have your utilities, uh, to continue.
They must have all of their metering automated.
That might, we are, we are, and kind of confirmed down there, we're one of the few cities that has everything, you know, where we have the water, sewer, gas, electric, you know, lots of, uh, some of the places, some of the, some of the entities down there are utilities. Like they're the making board of public utilities, we're the Hannibal board, but that's a separate entity in the.
It is.
And so they have, you know, some of their things and some of the cities have different things, so we're a little unusual in that. So it wouldn't maybe be as easy for us as, as that, but there might be some, anyway, I thought that was interesting.
Yeah, I think it is interesting.
One thing that, that they talked about is it helped. Cause I think one, one thing that we have, a lot of people, as we know, that are same people that, uh, you know, that are late a lot of times. Uh, a lot of owners go along with some of the different things. But adding the fees and the late, you know, late fees and turn offs and stuff really isn't doing that many favors either. But if, you know, maybe it would be better for us and that we, you know, as a city, got our money on time and better for them and that they weren't running, you know, late fees and shut offs if they could like come up with, you know, a hundred dollars, you know, another week or whatever. So.
It's interesting. That's an interesting thought.
Right now, like if I wanted to just put a hundred dollars on my, kind of, you know.
You can.
Venus Daytona has that option for prepaid.
Who does?
It just shows up as credit.
Venus.
Oh, okay, okay. Hey, that's something we can look at.
And, and the other thing that that does is it also removes the deposit requirements. Because you pay ahead of time, so you can't get behind it, like, you don't hear about the positive because by the time they shut you off and all that, you could be like, you know, a hundred dollars or three hundred dollars behind or whatever.
Or, or seven hundred.
Seven hundred, whatever the number is, right? But for them, it's, it's.
Residential, residential, I can see where that might work. I'm not so sure about industrial, commercial, but I think it's worth looking at.
Uh, but anyway, I thought that was interesting.
It is.
And, uh, anyway, something I would bring out, so.
Okay, well, it's a good report. Thank you very much.
Thank you very.
So.
Um, I have a Burma officer coming down on Tuesday, so if we wanted to ask him about that question, we could.
The one call?
The one call, yeah, cause he'll be here Tuesday.
Okay.
Go over to him, so he might know something about that.
Absolutely.
So we wanted to ask him.
Yes.
Swing, swing chains, same.
Okay, moving right along, operations, nothing. Um, yes?
I'd like to get a meeting scheduled since we're here, uh, for August 27th work at six.
What day of the week?
That's a Wednesday.
Just next week. Uh, hold on one second.
That would, wouldn't work with.
Okay.
I'm gonna push out for the next week.
The 26th.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, the 27th, 26th.
Yeah, that'd work for me.
The 26th, is that?
27th.
27th. Just Jason.
You wanna schedule it?
Let's do the 27th at six.
And you'll be right back here the 28th for the special meeting.
And here.
Good.
Twenty.
So that means we have how many meetings in a row?
Actually.
Yeah, no, I can't do that.
Which one?
I can't do that many in a row next week.
Well, you're not on operations, so are you?
I think I am. I think I must be on both. I must be on both at.
I know, I'm almost sure you're on.
Yeah.
What about? What about doing it after the tax?
That doesn't start till seven.
The, uh, the.
What about doing it before?
Well, the public hearing starts at seven, uh, then we have to have a special meeting after the public hearing. Uh, public hearing is to give the public an opportunity to voice their input, well, see. their input, also to the proposed tax rate. Um, the meeting after is merely, is for the board to approve the tax rate. That will not take very long at all. And we can actually, uh, commence the special board meeting just as soon and upon, uh, the closing of the public hearing. So it'll be a, in theory, it should be a very short meeting.
Right.
So that's your call if you want to.
Do, do you have a lot on the agenda?
There's not a whole lot, no.
I'm just wondering how long.
You do it one night.
We can do it an hour.
You're already here.
Make it, make it work.
Your call.
Okay, we can't get to it, we don't get to it. Would that work for you?
You do whatever you need to do and I, I'm not gonna commit to it.
But do you plan on being here for the tax rate?
At six, which would be an hour before the, the tax year, on the twenties, on the twenty-eighth.
That would, then we'd have a hard stop instead.
Right, exactly, yeah.
That works for me.
Yeah.
Jason.
That's fine.
Okay.
Alright, cool. Moving right along, Board of Adjustments?
Um, we, I think we're getting ready to probably meet again. We did meet, we pointed Philip Potterfield as the chairperson for the Board of Adjustments and we just reviewed, got ourselves up to speed about our roles and responsibilities.
Yeah, and you guys will be doing the variances and all that good stuff, so.
But I did something from Danette that.
Yes.
We're posting something regarding a variance on Meadows.
There is a variance coming up and right now I'm drawing, oh, yeah, uh, Mr. Luke Olivas is going to be requesting a variance. It's relative to the offset from the property line. Uh, his neighbor already has that variance, uh, so it'll be duplicating what his neighbor's already doing. So I doubt his neighbor's gonna have any complaints. Okay, moving right along. Next thing we have will be department reports. Let's begin with Police Department.
The only thing I have to note, uh, is trying to look at possibly purchasing a research police car for Crown Vic.
Okay.
I have to put that in a package.
Oh, wow.
We're done looking at doing this is because of maintenance expenses we've come up with on vehicle one oh two. Uh, we've found a few, uh, Crown Victoria's that are, I believe within our budget range on purple wave. Uh, the main one is a two thousand and nine. It's got less than seventy-five thousand miles, less than twenty-five hundred and fifty-two hours. Uh, if you will, would allow me to move forward with this. Uh, I do have somebody that, that is out in that area to, you know, check the vehicle out in person. Uh, hopefully be able to see what kind of mechanical shape that thing is in. Right now, it is relatively low. It was, uh, two thousand and twelve dollars as of a couple of days ago. Uh, looking at these cars, typical billing rate for them is twelve thousand on the high side. Uh, so I would guess if, if we could have the ability to get up to, nothing over twelve thousand on this vehicle with closing date on it, uh, nine to.
Can you refresh my memory on how much it costs to install all of the other equipment?
So that is the great thing about this is it has all of the equipment in it. All we need is radio and sire box. We have both of those at PD, uh, and looking at everything they have, uh, they do still have the maintenance with them. So we would just literally run the wires and PD ourselves. Wouldn't have to pay any additional.
And then you'd have to get it lettered or?
Uh, we, we can, um, with those vehicles, we don't have to. I mean, that could be something we could look at and do later on, a little time, something like that. Uh, but for time being, it could be hit on mark. Uh, one of the main reasons, like I said, doing this is I'd like to get that and just we can get one of your, your one oh two out of service. Uh, it was just keeping us alive. I mean, just put that vehicle in there and just turn on one oh two, please, uh, reserve the beginning.
It's one oh two, John, not on the shop?
It's not. They, they're still waiting for a special, a special engineer to come down from Michigan. Trying to look at this thing to figure out what is going on. Uh, so we still don't.
Zach, we did get, um, an email from Hope yesterday and I completely forgot to tell you about it. The latest cost on it is like fifty-nine sixty-three or something like that.
Which car is that on?
Fifty-nine hundred.
Fifty-nine hundred sixty-three, something like that, fifty-nine sixty-three, somewhere around that ballpark.
What about the one for transmission?
That one's already, already finished replacing.
It's back, it's on the, okay. This is the one we talked about that might be setting.
It's constantly problems. I mean, this thing's had more time.
I think one oh two is not a bit.
Um, I believe it's got maybe. That was got twenty-eighty and ninety thousand.
So one oh two was the transmission?
No, that was one hundred.
One hundred was, okay.
That's the one we talked about, this sixty-five hundred dollars.
And one hundred, we, we haven't, we haven't had a whole lot of issues with it. Uh, one oh two is the one that, that gives us the majority. Uh, one oh three is also fairly, fairly good. The explored we have is, in my opinion, the most reliable, least maintenance, lowest mileage. So that's what I'm hoping to try to push for. Uh, just start a rotation on that for, for budget period. Uh, planning on trying to look at the Thursday highway controls, fleet surplus. They've got a lot of them down there. Got full records, they're fully inspected. Uh, check and correct it before they're, before they're sold. Check out every two. So that's something I will be looking at, uh, for this budget time. If we, if we were able to do that, that would be worth selling, obviously, on some gap period, very decent. The request essentially is, uh, just being able to have the ability to go up to twelve hundred, twelve thousand for that vehicle if it is inspected and being fit to work.
I think the board ought to give consideration to act like, allow him to go up to thirteen. If twelve's the typical high, that doesn't mean that we're not gonna go over twelve. We really wanna get it that bad. We certainly need one because we got one that's dead.
We're gonna spend half of that on a junk.
I know.
The problem is if we try to turn it in or sell it, the way it is, we're not gonna get anything.
Yeah, we have to repair it or.
It works.
Yeah. But, but in the meantime.
I thought that you're spending more repairing that one.
Right. And with that runtime, they must not idle.
No, and so it, it needs to be an old detective's car.
Oh, okay.
So I mean, it should never pursue anything like that. It's just a forever around town. It's coming out of Kansas. Doesn't have a lot of saltware, rust or anything like that on it, so.
Yeah, I wish they had thirteen because I would hate to, you know.
I, I hate, I hate to lose over a hundred dollars.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to, uh, uh, up to thirteen thousand on the two thousand and nine Crown Vic in, um, that's on purple wave out of Kansas, out of Hudson, Kansas.
Mm-hmm. Okay, we have most on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, we have most second on the floor to, uh, allow the police department to bid up to thirteen thousand dollars, uh, for this two thousand and nine Ford Crown Victoria. Police interceptor, there's a colonel list on purple wave. All in favor, say aye, raise your hand. All opposed say nay and raise your hand. The ayes have the motion carries. There you go. We've got thirteen thousand, chief.
I have a question. Can you briefly explain this municipal division summary reporting from the backside of it, or the front side understanding? What are all these dollar amounts? Is this what the money we get back? Or is this what we pay out? Or do you? I don't, I don't know what that, I don't understand it. Do you know what it is? The front side talks about.
Yeah, so.
This first, I was trying to get it to balance in my head. So this is all like court fines and everything, but then we have to pay like law enforcement, like posts and law enforcement training and crime victim compensation. Those are fines that.
Okay.
Get a small portion of our fines.
Okay, so this comes out of the fines that we collect, sort of, okay?
Yeah, that's, that's, uh, any municipal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, chief. Okay. What?
Was this alignment something we needed?
Excuse me?
Or was that just for using the paper? Is this a quote from alignment on the back?
Yes, uh, so that's just a quote at this point. Uh, one of our pieces is getting an alignment. The other is meeting the control.
So this is part, this started getting the bids, okay.
Okay. Alright, moving right along, Water Department?
Alright, I give everybody, uh, four, two bids that were put out for supplies. We're gonna go over the smaller first.
Oh, we are?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This is for, uh, the apartments going in down here at, um, I don't know, Boy Rosary. Uh, there's gonna be, uh, eighteen of them total. And I believe the cost per tap is fifteen hundred dollars. So, uh, and the total of the bids came to seventeen thousand one hundred fifty-one sixty, I think?
Yeah, seventeen thousand one fifty-one sixties total.
Right. So this is just to buy everything we need in order to do the taps that these people that are doing the project out there are paying for.
They, they do pay us though, don't they?
Yes, they, they have paid, I know for at least, uh, twelve of the taps.
Okay.
And, uh, so even the twelve will cover the dollar amount that, that, that we're doing here.
And they're gonna be paying for a total of eighteen?
Yes, plus the street cut.
Plus the street cut, okay. So basically what you need from the board, approval to, excuse me, approval towards these bids in the amount of seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty cents?
Yes, and the ones in yellow from all the different vendors is, uh, that's, that's the cheapest.
Oh, so you did like, this is the seventeenth, that kind of combined of each.
Yeah, exactly. And you can see who got the bid by which one.
Okay, yeah.
It was the cheapest, uh, one with the cheapest all the way down. And I am happy with the product that they offer.
Thank you.
Yep, cool.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
The most on the floor to authorize the expenditure of seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty cents for these necessary items for the water taps for the new apartments that are going in or on Main Street. We have a second?
I'll say it again.
We have a motion, the second on the floor, to approve the expenditure of seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty cents for the water taps for the new apartments. All in favor, say aye, raise your hand. All opposed, say nay and raise your hand. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Expenditure is approved.
Okay, now onto the markers spreadsheet. Uh, this is the, uh, bids for, um, the, uh, chlorine addition at the, you know, water treatment plant as well as the, uh, required, um, addition of permanent chlorine dioxide installation at the, uh, water treatment plant. We've been on a, uh, uh, trial.
And this is what, this is Black and Beach did the engineering study for us.
Yes, yes. Yeah, and we are working with Black and Beach right now because I went through what they, it, it was, it was tough working through this whole thing. But, uh, now that we got it, I was able to change some stuff and saved us a, a lot of money. The, uh, just to put the building outside and the addition of the building that was, they had put in the plans was gonna exceed the total dollar amount of this there. So we were gonna have that plus, you know, another seventy thousand, so.
So now we can put it in the existing building then?
Yeah.
Have, have we got approval to do that yet?
Uh, no, but I talked to him today and he said that Mike was hoping we're putting it on the south wall of the garage. Him and Ben had no reason.
Who's him?
Mike Hall.
Got it.
Uh, so he is, he is redoing the plans. He's gonna submit them to Megan, uh, at DNR.
Was Megan involved in that conversation?
Not the one I had with Mike today because it was all on the phone.
He, but his confidence level's high?
Very high.
And, and if that all fails, if that all fails, what's the building gonna cost?
Well, it's really the, uh, I think the containment that we're buying can actually be used outside. Problem is, is it, uh, cuts off ADA compliance into the building and it actually causes other insurance issues because it's gonna be placed on the sidewalk in between the chlorine and the filter rooms. So there'll have to be steps and everything. And then the problem with that also is when the tanker trucks bring our coagulant, they're not gonna be able to turn around the driveway because they whip around all the way up to that. So it's, it's a, it's a whole, I mean, you know, it's gonna open up a big can of worms.
Alright.
Mike, where that building going?
Uh, the building is, it, it's not going anywhere.
You're not building a new building.
No, right there on, well, actually over there on that real nice flat brass place you had. Up on the sidewalk if you have.
I just asked him because if you build something that it triggers on the glass slope for the, you're gonna approach it with the airport, you're killed there.
Yeah, no, no, it's, we're talking, you know, where our parking lot is behind the building and where you pull up in park would be up on that sidewalk, right up against the, yeah, and we have.
Forget we were asking, George. Oh, I'm gonna go.
I got you. I got you. No, no problem.
But if this is approved, you won't be building, you won't be doing anything outside.
No, even if this, it, it, even if it's not approved, we will still be putting the same containment structure. It's just we're not gonna do what Black and Beach.
Got it.
It's gonna be a different type of building.
Alright, so you got sixty-nine thousand, six nine hu- six hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. Uh, looking at what was approved in the budget, uh, this board has previously approved two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, uh, out of the sales tax expenditures capex. So this is gonna be one of the very first expenditures.
Yeah, I would anticipate we're probably another, we're about twenty thousand dollars away from completing the entire.
Well, it's my intention to carry the same amount. Uh, of course, we will, uh.
We'll go list together.
We'll calculate, we'll calculate all the current expenses, uh, uh, and expenditures, what we paid for and pull out the two A. We'll go ahead and carry the two eighty forward into the next budget year because it's part of the, uh, sales tax fund. It's a separate fund. It's accounted separately. So it's not part of, it's not part of the general revenue fund. So what I need is a motion to approve the sixty-nine thousand, six eighty-one thirty-nine.
I'll make that motion.
We have most on the floor approving the expenditure of sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents for the water plant, uh, to move forward on the conversion from, uh, free chlorines to monoclorines. We have a second? We have the most second on the floor approving the expenditure of sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents for the water plant. All in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay and raise your hand. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Expenditure is approved.
Alright, we do have some hoops we're gonna have to jump through before we switch over to chlorines. It's gonna include public notice, positive public meetings and stuff. So we're gonna, I'll work with them. Now that we got this approved, I'll get in order. We're looking at, uh, the longest lead time was on something that's not a hundred percent required for us to make the switch, uh, yet. Uh, but it's, it's, uh, some continuous monitoring stuff. So we'll just have to be more diligent on, on. on, on making sure once we do the switch. But we will be working on, uh, on the public notices and the public meetings and stuff, and, uh, if I can get it in enough time, Mike, for your meeting, uh, next week, maybe we could even, you know, open, you could put a line item in there, open it up to the public for, to actually do like first, um, you know, just discussion about it.
Okay.
We're going, gonna have an hour for that.
I, I understand, yeah, it, uh, uh, you know, just maybe to be in a formative, just, hey, this is what we're doing, and kinda, you know, it just is an idea.
Okay.
What are the pictures? Well, that, uh, I, I'm gonna try to start giving you guys more information and kinda, as we do projects, so the projects that we're listed are the, the stuff that we listed in the report, them are pictures of what happened in, uh, in the reports. If I can get a little pictures here?
Okay, so the, the top left one on the tailgate, there's that, yeah, those are all the wipes I talked about it a couple minutes ago in the Griffith foot station, and we had to clean it out of the pump, so we had to, it, it was all buried back behind this impeller, which is another, that picture there, it was buried back, and we had to use, uh...
So the flushable wipes aren't really flushable?
They are not flushable. Well, they're definitely flushable, but they're not...
So how they get declared as flushable wipes if they're not...
They're flushable.
Yeah, it's purely marketing. Yeah, oh, you know, it's purely marketing, and no, they do not break down, uh, the, the no clot pumps, still can't handle, these are no clot pumps, they just, they get wrapped up around there and it is, it is horrible. Uh, so you ought to see how many of them actually make down the wastewater plant, uh, that new influence screen takes on it, and it's just, we get quarter of a dumpster hole every week.
Wow.
It is a lot, it's a lot, a lot.
That's just what you have.
So do you pull the, the...
You cannot pull that impeller, no. Yeah, and, uh, we, we, I've made a couple different tools, you gotta get in there, and then you gotta start it up, and, and it flings out, and you grab it, and it's, it's a real, it's a real pain.
But, uh, so then on the top of the page, the one in the middle, that is, uh, extra, that's, uh, both of them are, uh, one of the mixers out the wastewater plant that, uh, a coupler had come loose on, so we couldn't pull it to do the normal maintenance, so we had to drain a portion of the wastewater plant and took care of that. Uh, Mr. Box, um, water tap is there, and then, uh, this was from a week over on, uh, Meadow Drive, where we dug that, dug the meter bit up, and actually ended up being on a, a customer's side, but once we got in there, I couldn't go to the customer at that point, so we just went and fixed them all over there.
One more question, I'll, I'll let you go. Um, explain these July numbers to me. We start out with sending no water to town, or a negative amount of water to town.
I cannot tell you why that number is not there. Um, I will look at that and, uh, figure, I, I did not see that.
That's okay.
On my spreadsheet, it was showing it okay, but it didn't transfer.
That's right.
I'll take care of that.
Thanks. Okay.
Thank you, George.
Thanks, George.
Moving right along, electric, no one's here to report on electric, I think there may be something in your package.
Yeah, I think that's...
They've been doing a tremendous amount of tree trimming, uh, every quarter or other, buying a lot of the, uh, uh, uncoated wires where they're going through trees to arc and spark and burn the trees, so it's kinda nice that our new crew is working so diligently on addressing these problems. I'm, I'm, I'm very pleased with the work that they're doing, uh, I can't stress that enough. Gas? Street? Thanks.
Here were, one, some more asphalt.
I had revised, couple of y'all wasn't here the last page, and on the last page is what I, what we come up with, was the big one, I had to calculate some other roads and I handed them up, you can go down them.
Three of them, Piches?
Yeah, the last one is, is, uh, very, we were meeting a couple weeks ago. So I had him do one, and he took off a long street on this first one, and it's got a bunch of little ones in there, it's got Norfolk Street and that Westport Street, and it was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, and as you can tell, the tonnage went up, of course, it went less. And the next, the second page, uh, I had a long street, I took off a couple of these short ones, like North Black Lake, North Monroe Street, and it's two hundred and thirty-one thousand. I do any of all, I'll do that first one.
Did we come up with a number of how much we had budgeted for?
None. We had zero budget.
What about with Mill Street?
Well, let's, let me get to it. Okay, what we had, uh, for the Mill Street project was two hundred and ten thousand dollars. We, we will not be expending, well, I say nothing, or negotiation with one of the, uh, property owners for, uh, obtaining, uh, purchasing the right of way versus an easement, it's a long conversation, I don't wanna have it tonight. Uh, but even still, uh, worst case, we're not gonna be spending but a ver- a very few thou- two or three thousand dollars. Uh, the two thousand dollars is gonna be carried, two hundred and ten will be carried over, uh, into, um, the next budget year, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Um, our typical sales tax, uh, revenue is gonna be between two hundred and, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, there's no guarantees exactly what it's gonna be, uh, because it's a sales tax, not a property tax. Uh, consequently, we can go into the next fiscal year with some level of confidence. Uh, however, we know what we had committed, uh, we committed two eighty to the water plant, we're not spending that.
No.
We committed two ten to Mill Street, and that's not happening this year at all. So, um, I wish I could sit here and tell you that I have a very high confidence level that, uh, we could spend this money and be okay. And we probably will be this year. We won't be able to do it next year, and I can't have that discussion here and now. It'll have to be during our budget conversations, why it would be okay to do it this year, and we can't do it next year.
To do the paving this year?
It's very comp- it's very complicated, and this is not an appropriate format to, to have that conversation.
So we don't have the money for this?
We do have the money for it, but we won't, we won't, we won't have a carryover for next year.
We need to do it this year.
That's, that's, that's one way of saying it. Uh, we haven't, excuse me, I apologize, people, uh, we haven't touched a road in how many years?
Uh, it's been, uh, three to four.
Three to four years.
Twenty-two, I think.
Yeah, twenty-two.
Some are twenty-two.
Uh, some of the streets that I've looked at, uh, Berkeley and Monroe, uh, it's very embarrassing, uh, that, that those streets are in the condition they're in. Um, Norfolk Street, the, the, the road is, and, and we're gonna dig into why the road is being undermined, but it's, it's a pretty, it's a, uh, Chief, you agree, it's a pretty big, pretty big dip over there. Uh, we'd like to get, uh, Norfolk done for sure.
Um... The end of Long Street, we gotta do something.
Yeah. I'm, 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 you know, you all may crucify me next year, uh, for supporting this, and that's okay. Long Street, for those sections that had the street cuts done longitudinally, uh, they're horrible, they're pathetic. Uh, if I was a landlord on those streets, I'd be up there squalling because the street itself is reducing their property values, and that's not a joke. Uh, it's un- it's unattractive, um, and, uh, it's no fun to drive on. Chief, am I wrong?
That's bad, that's bad.
Yeah, it was pitiful.
You know, he's, he's the guy responsible for public safety and safety on the streets and traffic control, those streets are crap, sorry. Those streets could certainly use improvement.
So what streets are we looking at? What's, what's your recommendation? The first page?
The only thing we could add for that is that last block of lawn, he went in there and dug two long patches, redid it, and, and it kept raining, raining.
So with two thirty-one, six forty-two?
You went with two thirty-one, because the first one doesn't have long street there? No.
No, I cut it in.
He, he shortened the distance.
But do you wanna add lawn to this?
So you went with two thirty-one?
A block of, a lack end of block, I didn't have it figured, I painted. The last block of lawn has got...
Well, that covered the entire area that was cut.
No. No, if you do the entire area, you go to the last page.
That's why you would have to spend it.
It's not a huge difference.
Do it.
I'm sorry.
I apologize.
I mean, it's seventeen, what's it, seventeen thousand dollars?
Yeah, it's, uh, two forty, yes, yes, you're right.
Two?
Two forty-eight in the cover of all.
Right. You said about two...
Say it again.
How much money do we have allocating to the Mill Street property that we're not gonna use?
Well, uh, you're asking me to make an estimate, I would say two hundred and seven thousand. And the balance we could squeeze out of the water plant for now, because it's not gonna be expended this year anyway. George has managed to take what I thought was gonna cost two hundred and eighty, he thought it was gonna be down...
Be under a hundred.
Can we use that for this too?
This board can do whatever they want.
Well, there's, there's, uh, maybe to her question though, sometimes we're restricted on which, which areas we can put...
This is the CapEx fund.
It's CapEx, I think we're okay, right?
Yeah.
We can borrow from...
Or, or we can spend it.
Move through lineups.
We can spend it.
Since it's CapEx.
Yeah, it's not coming out in...
My thought is, you know, why cut off the seventeen, because it's not like we can just call them back and say, oh, come finish this. It's gonna be more than seventeen.
Spend it cheaper than...
Yeah.
I think, uh...
And, and that piece lawn that I put in there, that last block, yeah, it's terrible, in between, and so, so, and then you get to the street cut, then it picks up. I took it from County Line, four, piece four, four, which is a lot, and some of that's not bad, grow on there.
Do we have the money to spend on this very last page? Do we have the money to spend the two forty-eight?
Yeah. Yes, I think so.
That's everything?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the one I presented the first time.
Yeah, because it's eighteen-five just to get them out.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't mean to throw water on this, but to, because, well, I'm just saying, because of the dollar amount, she wouldn't be bidding this.
I did.
We did, it is.
I'm not here. This is the one I wanted to...
Yeah, you can do, you can do a little more gentle on that.
I missed the meeting.
Another, another...
And it was about four dollars a running foot cheaper, and I called another one, he gives help with money, and they'd be on bidders to make competition, then they wouldn't even go.
Okay, well, good job, Randy.
Oh, boy.
That's where you get a permit then?
Yeah, what? That, that was...
Okay, so can I make a motion that we approve this last, the, the higher of the... No?
Yes, you can. We have motion on the floor to approve the expenditure amount two hundred and forty-eight thousand, they're ninety-five dollars and fifty cents for street improvements in the city of Monroe City. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion second before... To approve the expenditure of two hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents for street improvements in the city of Monroe, city of Missouri. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand. All opposed, say nay.
You can't.
Raise your hand.
And you can't.
I just did that because I was trying to remind everybody, you gotta do something here. Raise your hand, uh...
Doesn't the street departments, they haven't even come close on their own department budget to even...
Uh, normally, it would have been their capital expenditure request. We, uh, discourage that, because you'll have to, if you recall, at that point in time, we had a lot of uncertainties, uh, as to the beginning fund balances, and we were quite concerned. Do you know the cash on hand, stat looks great? Okay, so we're gonna do this vote or not?
Yes, we did.
We're done. We're done. It's out. That's a lot of money.
Wonder what that work needs start?
Soon.
They do that, uh...
This year?
Yeah, there's a, there's a temperature report, man.
That's what I was...
Hey, better, better late than never, I think it's a good idea.
We haven't done it for a long time. The street people are happy to have to be updated.
Okay, Bill Inspector's not here, next on the Genevieve Airport. Keith, don't tell me you wanna spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's cold in here, folks.
It is cold in here. It's freezing.
We're gonna adjust the thermostat.
Feels good. The flying we hosted this past weekend was a big success, we had fourteen airplanes show up, over sixty people. The mayor showed up and represented the city and gave a little talk and...
Free breakfast, why not?
Lots of compliments on how good our airport looked, thanks to the street department, through the picnic tables and all, and they do an awesome job of keeping the place looking really good. And thanks to the council for supporting the airport. Um, in two thousand and one, Ruth Moplin was managing her, where she started taking pictures of all of the pilots that come through on her way to Oshkosh when they stopped for fuel. This book that I'm passing around has got, is a sample of what we did this year, been doing it for twenty-five years.
Wow.
And it's, it's a big hit with all the pilots that come through. When Ruth left and I took over, I just continued doing it, probably not as neat and as good as Ruth did it, but I attempted. Um, a pilot from Wyoming, he was planning on handing out the new campsite on September first, he's on his way to Southern Illinois to some kind of an event. Um, I have made attempts to contact Ryan Houston, the MECO guy that came and gave a presentation about being our consultant. Um, I don't get any replies from him. I mean, I'll get a reply, he says, I'll be there next week, and ten weeks later, he's not, so... Um, I make calls, and he doesn't answer, so I called the office, the main office, and then he called me and said, he didn't show up, but he requested more information, wanted to know how many airplanes, said, now we needed twelve, what we have today, I have twelve. And, uh, so I gave him the end numbers of all the airplanes, and, but I haven't heard back from him. Um, so that's basically all I've got.
You think it's because we're smaller, or...
I feel like maybe he's got bigger fish that he's frying than other airports are doing, they're gonna, uh, one point nine million dollar job at Kent, Missouri, they're doing work in Columbia, overly, I don't know how many of those airports he, probably not Kent, he's not, but maybe Jeff City north, he is, and, you know, probably he's, they're, they're going after the bigger jobs, and more, the bigger the job, the more money they're gonna make.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, but I'd still like for him to...
For sure.
To at least touch base with us.
Yeah.
You mentioned that we had an currently anonymous, uh, individual that was going to be approaching the board about doing a hangar, have you heard anything else on that?
I, I went back to him, and he said that he wasn't quite ready at this time, he just wanted to make sure that if he entertained it, that it would, it would work.
Well, I, I, I think it's fair to say that we'd be glad to speak with them.
Yeah, I told him, just, uh, get on, get over me, and I get him on each end.
Right. All right, that it?
That's all I have.
Thank you very, very much for the job that you do, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mosswood? Pool?
When's the last day for the pool, do you know?
I think they probably, just the weekends?
Weekends, maybe?
It's just weekends now, I can't answer that question. I think, I think Labor Day will be it, Labor Day will be it.
They open after school one day this week.
I don't think they can because kids...
I don't think they came because kids in track and practice football.
I swear, maybe it was live cards out there.
It could have been, it could have been something pre-scheduled with adults.
They may have, they have, they have water.
There was a birthday party out there one day too.
Alright. Okay, folks, uh, next on the agenda will be the presentation of the bills payable.
The question on this, uh, AP card services is our, we said the credit processing fees that we collect. Um, the third line for twenty-seven ten.
I just charged it.
Actual rate. That's good. Let's, we turn around and recruit those. Um, and also there was one to Alex.
Yes, yes, he was called in to help, uh, help, uh, help with a very specific issue, I, I can't recall what it was.
Okay. And last but not least, the very last thing, Mitch, Gerald.
Were you at?
For a thou- the very last one, for a thousand even.
It's not, it's on this page of the checks that we have.
It's on the ones that were already written.
Yes, that, that's a consulting firm for security for this building.
Okay.
And I'll be giving a report about, uh, their findings, uh, at the, uh, next board meeting.
Okay, cool.
So we've got them looking at wifi and some other stuff, I don't know.
I am amazed at the dollar amount of accounts payable. It used to be sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars.
Well, I'll, uh, rest assured, it will change.
I know, I do pay for these silly streets.
It's gonna change quickly.
Someone says a big shock.
Yeah, MP UA is, it's different now.
You know, it's, it's huge, and it's, it's huge, it's huge every time. Uh, you know, uh, we purchase our natural gas, uh, through that entity, we purchase our electric, that entity, so yeah, those are big, big, big numbers, no, no offense or bust about it. So I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable, I'm prepared.
We have a motion on the floor to approve accounts payable, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion on the floor to approve accounts payable, all in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay and raise your hands, the ayes have, the motion carries. Accounts payable are approved. Unfinished business, um, no golly gee, back in July, uh, the board was given a, a, uh, a policy for consideration, uh, called citizen participation in public meetings. I believe it can be found, uh, under tab thirteen. And it was a policy that, uh, generally speaking, was borrowed from another municipality. It seemed to be appropriate, it seemed to answer, uh, all the issues that those of us who had been here for, before, uh, ran into, I know back when I was on the board for six years, that, uh, there were times we wished we didn't have an open session. And, uh, obviously, at some point in time, that was qualified. And, uh, our existing ordinance does not allow a open session. However, those who wish to address the board may do so by calling City Hall and asking to be put on the agenda. And they will ask, uh, what the subject matter is, we'll get them on the agenda and they'll address the board. What this does is attempts to create, uh, an opportunity for this board to set a policy by proclamation. It does not require that we repeal the existing ordinance. And in being as a policy, uh, created by proclamation, uh, any future boards by proclamation can remove it. So this board members have had this for approximately a month to look at and give consideration to. And, um, at this time, I would like to open the floor up for questions and/or deliberation or debate by the individual board members who I will recognize when so asked. You're recognized.
Thank you. The policy to me seems to be exactly what we're doing now.
Okay.
It's just, it's just putting it in writing. If you wanna be on the agenda, you contact City Hall, you have to be, I mean, you have to do it in advance, you can't just walk in the meeting. So the policy just affirms what we're doing now, and to me, it breaks it down very explicitly in the case of a public hearing, uh, the rules and decorum, um, committees.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm in favor of it, I think we should adopt it.
Now, the difference between this and what we're doing now is this would allow, a couple of things would happen. Um, if the board adopted this policy as written, we would actually, uh, go to A and S Printing or someone. We'd have a, a board, uh, designed with, uh, the decorum rules would be posted on the wall. Decorum rule, I'll tell you what they are. Turn off or silence all, cell phones, ringing, other electronic devices. Refrain from behavior deemed inappropriate and or disruptive by the presiding officer, which is typical of the mayor, or if the mayor is not present, mayor pro tem. Refrain from private conversations during these meetings, cause they're very disruptive. Uh, don't address council members in individual conversation or make comment to individual council members. That's only during this particular, uh, 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 instance where you filled out the little card. You want to address the board, uh, the card are collected by the city clerk, handed to the mayor. And if the mayor, uh, recognizes you, you get to come up and you get to speak. Uh, that control is allowed by ordinance, uh, the chair of this meeting runs the meet. Now, uh, so they fill out a speaker card, it gets turned in to the city clerk, she hands them over to the mayor. Uh, when the mayor recognized the individual, they state their name and their address. Guess what? If you don't live here, you don't get to do this. Uh, if you don't live in the city of Monroe City, you will call City Hall, you get on the agenda, discuss whatever business you have to discuss. This is only for citizens of Monroe City who live here. Uh, they come up the podium, they'd be expected to, uh, bring forth their information or question or whatever in a very civil and not argumentative and respectful manner. Uh, if a group wants to address, uh, the, the city council, uh, the mayor may request that they establish a spokesperson for that group, and I can guarantee if I'm here, that's exactly what would happen. And the time limit's five minutes, and the mayor can vary that, uh, or the, or presiding officer can vary that, it's their discretion. Uh, the, uh, speaker would be requested to speak clearly and succinctly, which means understandably. The remarks would be directed to the city council as a body, not to an individual council member, member of the staff. And the audience, or audience, and the audience should refer, excuse me, or audience, and they should refer to staff by title and or department, if you're talking about staff. Um, if they have papers or documents, they give them to, uh, to the city clerk. Um, the mayor may allow, uh, more time, uh, for the speaker uh, or make other judgments or limitations about this portion of the gen- agenda depending upon the circumstance. So obviously, the chair has control. Uh, speakers will refrain from using profanity. Uh, language likely to incite violence or out, outbursts from the audience. Language that is disruptive to the orderly process of the meeting. Engaging, they will refrain from engaging in conversation with individual council members. Making comments of a personal nature regarding others, shouting, yelling, or screaming. Now, other than asking a question to clarify a statement, council members should refrain from entering into a dialogue with the speaker. Uh, and the time on the agenda is not intended for a discussion between the city council and the speaker. And should not be used for that purpose. So basically, they're gonna come up here and they're gonna give us information, or they're gonna make a statement, or, or share an observation. And we'll take that and then we will act upon that, uh, at a later time if the board or an individual alderman should show, choose to act upon the information or what has been presented to the board. So, um, uh, speakles, speakers will not continue to address the city council once they've left the podium. Once they've left here, they're expected to sit down, uh, and, uh, maintain their composure and social weight. Uh, and the chairperson is responsible for maintaining order and decorum. And will not allow the speaker to make personal attacks or inflammatory comments or statements. And if they do, they will ask speakers to quiet, be quiet and sit down. And if that, they do not respond to that, they may be asked to be escorted out by the sergeant of arms. And so this goes on, established public hearing, uh, uh, basically requirements, how it's done, what happens, no different what we're currently doing. Um, these rules, if you wanna call them, uh, very lengthy, go into how we currently handle, uh, work sessions and public hearings, the only difference is gonna be, this board would be establishing a time period that would be on the agenda, uh, for, uh, citizen participation, that's what the agenda would be called. Um, if people filled out the cards, we collect them, uh, hand them over to the mayor or whoever's presiding and go from there during that time period. Uh, and if we're, we probably want to establish a maximum time for that agenda item, which may limit the number of speakers, but there's not much we can do, can't go on all night long. So I'll stop talking and let you guys continue.
So they can come that evening and fill out a card, they don't have to.
This is just separate than what you were actually.
Yeah.
It's a separate agenda.
This is if you come in and you.
Just.
An, an example, real quick, an example, if someone says, hey, I got this awesome product and I think you guys ought to know about it. You know, I'm gonna make you aware of my product or my service or whatever, that's an agenda item. Uh, this is where someone comes up here and says, hey, my streets are crap, could you all please do something? Thank you very much.
Would Darren have been an agenda item or a public participation?
Say it again.
Darren tonight, is, like, how would you see that?
Um.
Darren's.
Either or, because I'll tell you why, uh, you can do the, you can do the, I'm gonna go up to the, they're having a meeting, I'm gonna go up there, I'm gonna talk to them, right? And you come up there and fill out the card, or you can say, yeah, you know, uh, this is something that's really important, uh, it's gonna take a little bit of time, longer than five minutes. I need to go on the agenda. It, it's kind of a time-based thing. Uh, and also, you know, the basis of, of what, what is, what is their purpose, what are their intentions to accomplish?
Well, I think this is long overdue, I hear from citizens all the time, it's like, well, we can't talk, I don't know why we go to a meeting, we're not, I'm not coming, we can't say anything. So I make a motion to approve the policy for citizen participation at city council meetings.
We have a motion, a second, but I wanna ask the question, do we need to have further discussion?
Do we need to specify a maximum timeframe for that?
For the, for, for the agenda item?
For the whole. What do you wanna say?
I think you could do that or it takes quite a.
I would say to me.
Yeah.
And is this, um, unless they would do that some day?
We can go back, it's a policy, okay?
We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the policy for citizen participation at city council meetings. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Is there some, maybe we can get this on our Facebook, social media page?
We will, hold on, we will. Uh, motion, ayes have it, the motion carries. I believe that we will, I thought we had the proclamation with, do you have the proclamation with you? I can sign the proclamation based upon the, on the ayes in the vote. So, uh, I'll sign the proclamation tomorrow. And, uh, if I find that that's not accurate, um, we'll bring it back to the next board meeting. I believe all I needed from you guys was a vote to accept the policy. And then, uh, by proclamation, we will institute that policy. If that's wrong, I'll bring it back.
Will, will we publish the policy or the proclamation or how are we gonna let people know?
We have to do the proclamation, uh, and then this can be published, it can be put on our website and it can be put on our Facebook page. And, uh, it'll become a part of our policy manual. What do you think?
I think it's great, I just want people to know.
Long overdue?
Yeah.
Alright. So that closes up unfinished business, uh, next thing we have uh, is, uh, to, uh, go into closed session.
We need to tonight, we need a close session tonight?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to RSMO six ten point OT one. Subsection three, hiring, firing, and discipling promoting employees.
We have a motion on the floor to go into executive session pursuant to RSMO six one zero point zero two one three. Hiring, firing, discipling or promoting of different employees by a public governmental body. And personal information about the employees discussed or recorded, we have a second?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion, a second on the floor to go into closed session, this is done by voice. By roll call. Uh, hold, hold, hold on, hold on, hold on, one second, I will help you. Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Quinn?
Yes.
Alderman Snyder?
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Simpson?
Yes.
Alderman Osborne?
Yes.
Motion carries. We're in closed session. Those of you who are not specific to this session, please vacate for friends.